UBSutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake. Where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe. Providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at PlumasLakeSelfStorage.com.
Win by finding over 100 eggs. It was a very fun activity and we see lots of engagement by our students and staff. The staff hid the eggs and our students really worked hard finding. This week, we have our Spring Spirit Week at our school. Monday is wear florals and tie dye. Tuesday is twin day. Wednesday is vacation day. Thursday is dress as your type. Friday is teacher-students walk meeting. This year, our prom is May 10th and the theme is Masquerade at the 530 Building in Marysville. And prom is going to be from 8 to 12. And our tickets, they went on sale last Tuesday in the student store for $40. And a lot of students have already purchased our tickets. And then our senate, they're coming up with spirit days and activities for the weekend prom. So everybody has like a really good fun. And then food fair paperwork is now available and clubs are trimming in what food they want to put on the menu to earn money and fund Rains Burger cards. Our ASV applications are also now available and they're due April 29th. And you have like certain GPA requirements and things you need to do to be an ASV. On April 10th, we're having a link room movie night and students are welcome to bring their friends and family for a fun spring. We have an eighth grade visit coming up on April 22nd from 8:30 to 10:30 a.m. at AK School. And basically at these visits, we've been doing them at many different schools. We explain what ASV is and why students should join. It's like to the eighth graders on what our University City High School does in ASV and how we serve our student body. And then we are trying to set up a date with Riverbend for our next one. Our open house is on Thursday, April 24th this year and we've been setting up for that and we're excited to have it. The rally team is planning our end of the year rally, which is going to be summer carnival themed. And it's going to be outside, which is something new our school's been working on. So everybody is excited. Lastly, our students are working hard for the end of this prom this year and are ready to go on spring break next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice job. Student recognition, winter athletic run.
Well, this is always a fun time of the year. We are here to recognize our winter student athletes. And so I'm going to invite, um, Bill, you're the first, Bill McFoley from our athletic director from River Valley, his friend. To introduce our coaches. And then we'll introduce their student athletes.
They said nobody can hear anything in the back if the microphone get turned up or something like that. But I don't really need a microphone, so I think everybody can hear me. Um, so anyways, uh, thank you, uh, school board and thank you cabinet. Um, it's always a great time to be here. Um, thank you for continued support of, uh, all the RVHS Athletics, but YC Athletics as well. Um, we do really appreciate that. Uh, we'll just go in the order of the agenda. So we'll just go with boys basketball first and Coach Lo. Coach?
First off, thank you, uh, governing board and superintendent Azumi for recognizing our student athletes here tonight. Right now, I'd like to have the River Valley Boys Basketball Team, uh, please come up along with my assistant coach, Paul. All of you. They're normally not this shy. So, uh, as far as I know, River Valley High School opened in, uh, 2005. And there's been a lot of basketball teams come and go over the years. It was hard for me to believe that this year's team was the first team in the history of RV Boys Basketball to win the first playoff game. I'd like to thank my assistant coach, Paul, right here. And, uh, the administration of River Valley High School and the parents for entrusting their student athletes to me. Uh, these guys spent a lot of time in the weight room, the gym, the track to earn the opportunity to, uh, make the playoffs and go to a private school in central Catholic of Modesto as a 12 seed and beat a 5 seed was a great accomplishment. I mean, private schools are always tough. Uh, but the even greater accomplishment of these guys right up here is we have eight scholar athletes out of 12 players. That means that means they have to carry a 3.5 GPA and above. Our overall team GPA was 3.6. So I'm extremely proud of all these group of young men and what they accomplished on and off the court. Former Hall of Fame coach, John Wooden of UCLA said, "What you are as a person is far more important than what you are as a basketball player." And these people, these, these guys up here are great people and that's a tribute to their families that are out here in the audience. Um, thank you again for honoring these young men. They are going to be great people down the road. So they make RV very proud. Thank you.
Need to try and get a picture of all of you. Hey, we can do this. Okay, one, two, three, smile. Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, smile. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
And then, uh, Jax, Coach Moore here. Yeah, yeah, all you.
Hello, everyone. Nice to meet you all. I'm Coach Moore. I, uh, just, uh, finished up the season at River Valley, my first season as the head coach of the men's soccer team. And admittedly, I'm not that prepared. That was very impressive. Next year, after we win sectionals, I'll bring my whole team with me and we'll be a lot more prepared. But, uh, we had a great season, uh, the season before I took over, prior to me coming, we had come dead last in the league. So the team I inherited was, um, not extremely motivated. They had never really done much at River Valley. And so it was a little bit of a challenge. The thing I'm most proud of with them is not so much our on-the-field success. We were undefeated in preseason. We lost to one team all, all year long. Roosevelt's the only team that beat us. Uh, we beat everybody else we played, uh, including, uh, we won a home playoff game and lost a very, very narrow, narrow nail biter to Roosevelt in the second round of the playoffs. Um, that I'm still having a hard time getting over. Sounds funny, but my wife doesn't think it's funny. That's true. Thing I'm most proud of though, I think, is that we, uh, we became vulnerable. I think vulnerability is a precursor to success in anything that you do. And when I showed up the first day of the season, first day of practice, the kids were anything but vulnerable. They really didn't care. Um, they, they didn't take it very seriously. And my job and the job of my staff was to help them care as much as we did. About, about being there, about going through the process, about winning, about doing our best. And throughout the season, they opened up and became vulnerable and they really believed that we could do something special. And so did I. And of course, when you become vulnerable, losing hurts even more. And so I think, uh, I know this is supposed to be, uh, thank you for honoring us here today. I, but it really does hurt when you open yourself up and you get that close to your goal. And then it, uh, ends the way that it did. Um, I know for some of my seniors, Diego, Benji, uh, that was their last chance. Fortunately, I have a lot of young guys coming back and we'll get another chance next year. And I feel strongly that we've created a real identity, uh, with our program. All of our assistant coaches, my JV coach, Javi, we're all on the same page. All the young freshmen coming in, they're going to know what we expect from them, uh, and what River Valley Soccer is. So I fully expect to be standing right here next year with a sectional title. I'm going to let you all know that right now and I'll have my whole team with me then. So thank you very much.
Actually, I should switch on.
And then wrestling, Coach Alman?
Hello, my name is Coach Alman. Um, I'm the second longest tenured member of the RVHS Wrestling Staff. Can I get my RVHS wrestlers to come up here? In my last decade of coaching at RVHS, we've had some ups and downs. More recently, we've had a lot of ups. Um, and we've had the privilege of not exactly having a rebuild season. Even though we didn't have, um, the season that we wanted, we had high expectations. There was talks in the new league, the Football Valley League that we moved into, of River Valley Wrestling being in the mix for a league title. Uh, we had some challenges along the way and these, uh, young men and women in front of you rose to that challenge. We have some, some freshmen that got put in the varsity lineup and anybody that's played sports knows. Being a freshman going against seniors, it's tough. And we give so much respect to the kids that stepped up in that lineup. Um, I am so proud of the way these kids persevered. Um, some of the highlights from our team were, uh, several students qualified to postseason. Ethan Rayno. And then qualifying postseason were, uh, where's it? Summers, Kaden Summers. We have our, our all-league members, um, our league finalists. We have Blake Dela Fuente. Paul Dela Fuente. Isaac Scali Garcia. Zoe Devon. Uh, make it the postseason. Someone push past beyond. So, uh, let me know in fact, California is one of the only states in the country that has a one true state champion. So the state tournament is one division and the best 40 kids for each, uh, weight class qualify to that state tournament. Each successive postseason tournament whittles it down to those final 40. We had students make it to the, several make it to divisions and then we had several make it to masters. Um, with one making a return trip, joining an exclusive club, I think of only three other wrestlers from RVHS to make it multiple times a state. Again, masters qualifiers. I'm super proud of these guys. With our young athletes, we're sad to lose our seniors, but I'm super proud of that. I am very excited for the future of RVHS Wrestling. Thank you.
What's your name, sweetie? So, maybe you could do that faster. You guys want to come on inside so that way you can picture? Thank you. Congratulations, guys. Okay, one, two, three, smile, please. Thank you, egg.
Phil, is that all your teams?
Aziz.
Thank you, Phil. Um, I'd also like to invite us to the podium, Principal Esperanza Leon, who will introduce her coaches from the varsity high school.
Good evening. These are the fun board meetings, right? We're made to do the celebration. So, um, tonight I'm here to recognize our coaches and our student athletes. It feels really weird to have my back to the audience. So I'll kind of do the sideways thing. So our first group that we're going to recognize is boys basketball. Is Coach Evans in the house? It's, yeah, and then Bobby maybe? Okay, do you want me to just call it athletes then? Students, athletes. Is Abi Manu Metta here? Can't speak to the board and the cabinet. What an awesome athlete here. Cause I'm not a coach, I'm just a principal. But I can speak to the character of our athletes and that not only are they students, but they're also athletes. And you know, the standard that we hold our students to is being genuine, organized leaders who are dedicated. We love to see that not only out on the court, we also see that on our campus. So, um, I have here some notes from Coach Evans that Abi was the all-league and FBL scholar athlete. And for the team, is that right? Okay, awesome. And then is Alex Haver here? He's not here? Okay, well, I'm going to tell you about Alex. Alex was named to the FBL Scholar-Athlete. Completed a three-year varsity career in which he scored 803 points. Um, his career free throw percentage was 88%.
Can I get a picture of, uh, the two of you?
Which action do you want as Laura?
That's just, oh, I've seen that one. Maybe I did a good background. Hold on a second here. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Yeah, Bobby? Hey, I'd like to introduce our girls' basketball coach, Willie Burns.
Hello, everybody. Thank you very much for having me here. Um, at this time, I'd like to bring up, um, our, um, first, our, our first, uh, team all-league, um, FBL Player of the Year. Ms. Jules Vasquez. I like to say that inheriting a new program is not easy. It is easy when you have someone to rely on, a senior who's been through there, who's played for us for four years now. Um, who's thick and thin, who knows, who's grown with the system, who knows basketball and is able to help lead our team. Um, Jules, again, top 10 in pretty much every field for us this year. Um, top 10 in points, um, top 10 in field goals made, top 10 in three points made. Um, and then number 10 in scoring for the whole league, um, for our girls' basketball team. Um, not only that, but she is a scholar athlete. Alright, so we take very much pride in that, knowing that she has all the tools to go on to succeed, to do stuff, um, that only she dreams is possible. And I know that this young lady would do it because she has the courage, she has the power, she has conviction. I'm really, really proud of her. I'd like to say thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Um, is Coach Eric Felie here? Boys soccer? Is Victor Soto and Angel Torres are you here? Do you hear not anyone? Okay, so for boys soccer, we wanted to recognize Victor Soto and Angel Torres for first team for the league. Next, I'd like to introduce Coach Jerry Asuzaan, um, to, for, to girls' soccer coach.
I thought sitting in the corner in the front, I could hide a little bit, but probably that didn't work. So, uh, this is my seventh season at, uh, YC. So I've been very proud to be the coach, uh, there for all of these seasons. And I can tell you the team we had this year was especially special. Uh, they played probably together better than any team that we've seen despite our record. Uh, they moved the ball better than anybody. Uh, they were together as a team. And following all those tenants that are really important as, as athletes, uh, and everything that really makes up what a team really stands for. That was really important to us. And, uh, the players that we want to recognize were players that really, um, embodied that. We use a term a lot of times called tough commitment team. You're tough both mentally and physically. You're committed to yourself, your family, your team, your school. And team. So your team-first player that puts the team first. And so those are very important standards to have as you go through your life. Those are things, those are things that we push throughout our season and throughout their careers. So, um, ladies, if you're here, you should come up. Come on up, Taylor. Yulisa, you're here? There we go, Annala? So these three ladies all exhibit that to the highest degree you could ever ask. Uh, there are outstanding ladies that are great in school, they're great at home, and they're also great on the pitch. All three of them played with injuries throughout the entire season and that would be the only reason that they weren't on the field. So if you look at their minutes, it's pretty much every minute of every game on the field. So that's a really hard thing to do in a 25-game season. Uh, and to keep that commitment. They also kept their commitment all through the entire summer and, uh, all through the year through. As everyone knows, that winter sports are really hard for families because, uh, there's Thanksgiving in there, there's Christmas, New Years. And so these three ladies stayed extremely committed during that time and the time that's very difficult. So our first, uh, all-league recipient is Taylor O'Leary. Taylor's a senior this year and sadly she's graduating. We'd like to keep her around longer, but obviously we can't do that. Taylor was on our program for four years and she's a two-year captain on varsity. And she's one of those people you just can't replace because of her personality, the way she's there for the team, how she works. Uh, she was a really big force in midfield, uh, there. And she played with a knee injury. She was released by her doctor. Doctor said, "Your knee's messed up. You can play and let's do surgery at the end of the year." Which is something I've never really heard before. It sounds contrary to common knowledge, right? It just doesn't make sense, right? But she did all year, played, played like a champ no matter what was happening. And we're just extremely proud of her. So she has a very bright future ahead of her. She keeps grabbing it. Um, and, uh, we look forward to hearing what she does. Uh, Yulisa has been on our program now, this will be her, uh, third year coming up here, but she's two years in our program and her second year on, her third year, right? I can't keep track. I'm getting too old. Uh, her second year on varsity, uh, she was brought up, um, the following year for a tournament because we were missing a player. And her first game, she scored a goal. So one of our favorite moments, uh, for her. This last year, we moved her to outside back, uh, defense and, uh, she just locked everyone down. It's impossible to get by her whatsoever. But she was also a dual threat. She could play pretty much anywhere, play up on the wing and even play it forward. So to be that versatile is, is quite something. So she was also made a captain this year through her hard work and her attitude. She's kind of a no-nonsense person. Now, it just says things how, how, how it is and I hope she never loses that. So, uh, I definitely enjoy that and it's good to have those, those sort of people around. And we look forward to her, her next year. It's going to be, uh, her best yet. So Annala has been on our program for a couple of years as well. It's her first year on varsity. And it sounds funny when I say it, people laugh, but I say it. She was one of our biggest surprises this year. So we were really worried about our center of our defense. And, uh, through her practice in the offseason, Angela, Annala came through and boy, she was one of the strongest players that we could have on our field. That's a really important position. If you know soccer at all, if your standard of defense is falling apart, you're in big trouble throughout your entire season. And I tell you, when Angela was in there, Angela was in there, uh, I don't think anyone would ever beat her. So it was really tough. She locked down some of the best players in the league and really frustrated them. If you ever watched video on that, you'll see her get, uh, just be angry and frustrated through, through most of the game. But her style of play was outstanding. Uh, her attitude was outstanding. She was hurt a number of times, even through games, sore ankles. She got sandwiched and beat up a whole lot. Seemed to spend a lot of time on the ground. Just players are getting frustrated. Never, ever retaliated, just kept playing hard. So just a great example of what it means to be a great sport. So we're really proud of her and again, we're looking forward to her, her senior season coming up here again, so. Thank you for recognizing our players. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, girl.
And I think, do you have a dad back here who wants to take a picture or? Are you, are you, okay. If you go right back over here, we can, we can get a good. Then you can see the crowd. Thank you very much.
So as you know, this is my first year as a high school principal. So it's been a learning curve for me to learn about all of our sports programs. Um, one of the things that I just love so much is seeing our coaching staff and how they work with our new people. Not only are they focused on, of course, the technical work of the sport, but they're also, as you can hear from our coaches, just focused on developing young people into adults. Um, thinking about the beyond, you know, sports is a medium to grow people into adults. The leadership skills that happen, the, the teamwork, um, it's been quite marvelous to be a witness of that. Now, the last team that we're going to introduce tonight is our wrestling team. And I was told at the beginning of the season that, um, it was going to be a special season. And it really was when you see the long list of athletes we're going to recognize tonight and, um, their distinctions. But really, I'd like to thank our coaching staff for all of your time and dedication. I know it's, it's a, it's a cliche sometimes to say that, you know, our teams are a family. But when you came out to the matches, you could really sense that in the wrestling community, it really was a family. The support of the families coming out, the community there, it was really special to witness that. So I'd like to introduce our coach, Casper.
How's it going, everybody? Um, before, uh, we introduce all the kids and have them come up, I wanted to talk a little bit about how we did this year. So it was probably one of the best, um, seasons that the school's ever had for wrestling. We won league undefeated. We were the first team at the school to win, uh, a league title in the new league. So that was, that was a big deal. Uh, we had five, uh, boys, uh, were league champions. We had three girls were league champions. Um, We had three girls were league champions. Um, first time the, the, we've been in a league that has record, that basically has, um, kind of represented the, the girls in elite championship mode. We've never, you know, the girls just go to regionals and that's it. This time, we actually had, uh, league championship tournament. Girls were recognized, so that was a big deal. Um, and then we had seven boys qualified for masters, and we have four girls qualified for masters. Um, so again, that, the, the eleven qualifying for masters is the most we've ever had at the school. Um, I mean, that it's, that, that's, we're taking half the team to masters with the boys, which is, you know, a lot of teams will never get that opportunity to do that. So we, we had a really good year. Um, I wanted to talk a little bit about the, the kids that are on the team. We have five of these kids that we're gonna, uh, recognize are freshmen. That's a big deal. Not a lot of freshmen that can do that well their first year, a lot of freshmen make it to masters. And then the red, we had one junior, uh, that we're gonna recognize, who will be back next year, and then the rest of them were all seniors. Coming, uh, back from COVID was really hard. We had a really good year before COVID. Uh, we qualified six kids to state, the most we've ever qualified at one time. Then COVID happened. Uh, that year before COVID, I graduated half of my varsity team. Then COVID, the other half graduated during that COVID year. They never got a chance to wrestle. Coming back from COVID, we had, I think, five returning wrestlers. That's it, five. Five returning wrestlers. I lost three of my four coaches. Um, coming back was really hard. I had a bunch of young kids, a bunch of freshmen, a lot of them had never really wrestled before, or maybe wrestled one year in middle school. They paid their dues their first two years. Hard. Uh, having a, having a team of ninety-five percent freshmen going to wrestling and varsity tournaments and varsity matches, you know, fourteen, fifteen-year-olds wrestling seventeen, eighteen-year-olds is hard. Uh, trying to keep them in the room and not let them quit is hard. Trying to tell them, you know, you, you guys don't suck, you're just young. You're just young, stick with it, just stick with it. And, you know, I know a lot of them didn't believe me a lot of the times when I said they were gonna be good. They were gonna be good. I can see the talent, I can see the heart, but please just stick with it. I mean, I bet some of these kids, some of them wanted to quit, I didn't let them. Some of them tried to quit a couple of times. Um, some, some of them, I thought were gonna quit and they stuck with it, surprised me, proved me wrong. But it was really hard to try to keep these kids in the room after getting beat and beat and beat and beat. You know, week after week, I would tell them, "One day, you guys are gonna be the big dogs. You guys are gonna be the ones that everybody's afraid of at one point." Um, we started to see that a little bit last year, and then this year, they just shot through the roof. Um, they really, that's my son crying, sorry. They, uh, they, it really shined this year, and, uh, you know, I told them, "Just, just stick with it. It'll pay off. Trust the process." And it, and it did. We had one of the best years we've, we've ever had, so. You guys wanna come up? You all know who you are. You guys wanna hang out over there? So, real quick, those freshmen, raise your hand. Freshmen, okay? Uh, match of qualifiers and league champions. Uh, we have our one junior, DJ. He's gonna be back. DJ, uh, he placed at masters. He didn't qualify high enough to make it to state. He just, just, he lost the match in order to go. Uh, but he arguably had the toughest weight class in our section, period. He had the one in state, the two in state, the three in state, I think what the.
Fifteen.
Yeah. All, all in our, all in our, all in his bracket at our masters. All those guys graduating, he'll make it next year. Um, and then the rest of them were seniors. Some of the seniors aren't here that, that stuck it the last four years. Seniors, raise your hand. So some of, these are the ones I've been, you know, talking about, telling them just to stick with it, it's gonna pay out, um, and it, and it did. Um, couple highlights, real quick. We had, um, so DJ was a masters placer. Uh, we had, um, we had Jalen here, who was a two-time state qualifier. Uh, she was our very first ever regionals, uh, champion last year. She, uh, basically went out and reclaimed her title again, and then she became our very first ever female from Uba City High School to win, um, sack-walking section championship. That, that's a big deal. She's, she made history to win the, the sack-walking section. It's a big deal. We're in a big arena. They only put two maps out there, one for the boys, one for the girls championships. She went out there and, uh, she won in the first round. Didn't, didn't just go out there and win. She, she, she didn't even make it out of the first round. She pandered. Um, she's our first, not only is she our first girl to ever do it, but she's our first, um, section champion since my graduating year. When my best friend, uh, Woody went out there and then won it. So twenty-one years, I think? So, um, and then we also had, we also had, uh, Israel Perheel was our boys' state qualifier. Um, another really good accomplishment. He was, he was arguably one of the best kids in the state this year. Um, only lost, only lost a couple of matches. Um, I mean, did, did great. Placed last year, didn't place high enough at masters, made it this year. DJ, that's what you're gonna do again. And then we had Roman and Izzy also, uh, got a hundred, uh, career wins, which is a big accomplishment. And then Jalen just, just missed getting, she's, she's within ten matches of getting a hundred career wins, so. Um, great, great season, guys, so.
Allison? Mayily? Okay. Jane? You go? Maddox?
Thank you.
Uh, Alred? Uh, Romans? Alexander? Uh, Vivian?
Yeah.
Daphne? And Cheryl?
Here, excuse me, guys. I'll move it back. It's all. Gotta get centered. Get centered.
One, two, three. Okay, I need to get one. Oh. Smile. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
And girls.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
I, I do wanna acknowledge our coach, our coordinators, our parents to support our student athletes. But I think what is impressive is that many of our students are multi-personnel athletes as well as, um, making grades and making themselves, so I think kudos and compliments to our kids.
Amen.
All right, uh, next is gonna be staff recognition. Thank you, um, Director Peltier, in the corner, um, is here to introduce, um, for your admission today.
Good evening, board of trustees, staff, audience members. Uh, that was wonderful. What a great use of time recognizing our students and our coaches and our school programs. That was, that was awesome. And now we're gonna continue the awesomeness by recognizing some amazing staff in our school district. We're excited to recognize these staff. They, through their excellence, they shape our culture. Um, and we know by recognizing them, they'll be more productive and stay with us and continue our school's growing and improving, helping us achieve our mission statement as a district, which is preparing the foundation for each student to build tomorrow's world. So with that, tonight, we have one school tonight recognizing three, three outstanding staff members. It's, uh, Principal Rocco Greco from Andrus Carver School will be presenting these awards.
That's good. Yeah, yeah. Um, so, uh, as a principal, one of our main jobs is to build culture and trust with our employees. And I told them tonight, getting an award, they were excited. I said, "We'll be in and out of there." Now they're looking at me like, "You fuck." So, uh, I won't be as long-winded as I normally am with these things, but I do wanna do justice and give them the honors that they deserve. So I want you to picture for a minute. Everyone remember the show Cheers? You guys old enough for that one? Yeah, so you walk in, you're Norm, and everybody knows your name. So there's one place that everyone kind of gathers in the morning as the school day starts. And so my office, Kathy, my secretary's office are kind of right next to it, and right in the middle, you've got Melinda Thomas. So Melinda, before I start, come on up. So anyone who's worked in the school knows, knows there's outside of her amazing, whoa, amazing work and all the, outside of all of her amazing work and things that she does, there's some skills that you have to have. So she has every sub checking in, every teacher that comes up for the morning chuckles and kind of that culture building, getting ready for the day. So at any given time, there's ten to fifteen people standing around Melinda's desk. So sometimes she has to engage and, you know, build the culture and help with those things. And sometimes she has to be able to just flat-face tune us all out because she's got things to do. Um, but Melinda's one of those rocks in the office, one of those people who's always calm, one of those people that you can count on to get things done. If we say it's gotta happen, like, you can guarantee it's gonna happen. Um, at the same time, like, kids come, they let us see her, the families, she's been at AK for a long time, longer than me, we'll say. We won't say years. Yeah, too, too many years for her. Um, but she really is a rock, and the community there loves her. The parents and families all love her when they come in. It's just one of those things that outside of the amazing work ethic and things that she gets done, uh, she's just one of those faces that when you see her there in the morning, it's always a smile. Everyone's always grateful to see her. No one, at, at schools, this is a rare statement, when I say, "Nobody is ever mad at Melinda," which I don't know how she does that one. Still working on that. Uh, but sometimes Melinda's mad at me. Um, but she's just really the heart of AK. She's been there in the office for a long time. She kind of really holds things together for us. So tonight, we just wanted to let her know she's the original, and she's all that in a bag of chips. So, a bag of chips.
Thank you. Two chips.
Well, you have to give a speech. Okay. All right. Next up, we have another kind of longstanding institution at AK. So when I first got to AK, we started kind of restructuring some things. Um, and this teacher I went to and said, "Hey, next year, would you be willing to kind of be the central core part of our avid program?" Like, we, we needed to rebuild, we needed to be able to make it school-wide, and for that, we really needed kind of a hub for that program. So before I go any further, Sandra Dawson, come on up. Sandra banked, and I just say her name and walk away. We all know that's not gonna happen. Um, so outside of that, and today we were at Sierra College, uh, taking the avid kids there to be able to see colleges. Uh, we're trying to make sure they don't just see four years, but they understand all the different options that are available to them. Uh, we had a very great trip. I have some friends who coached there, so we got to actually get into the sports facilities and get on the fields and do all of that. So the kids were just absolutely ecstatic about being there today. But that speaks to not just her avid program, but her CASE program. So, and for those of you who don't know, CASE is kind of an exploratory, it gives them a chance to see a bunch of different CTE programs. Uh, people come to visit her program all the time to see what she's doing with it. Um, avid really, uh, I've seen it take off since it kind of centralized with Sandra as the hub. Uh, we've got our school-wide certifications now. Uh, she's done a great job working with the elementary teachers to be able to push it into their ideas for how we can move it into the budget to make sure it's happening in the classrooms. Um, and she does it all with a smile on her face. Uh, she's there every day, one of those employees who's just there. You know, she's gonna get her job done. Uh, she's gonna be funny about it. Uh, she's usually one of the people gathered around Melinda's desk in the morning. Um, but just kind of the heart of AK. So tonight, we wanted to honor Sandra. She's a little spicier, so she gets the limo. Speaking of spicy, so our next employee, uh, is new to AK. So, I blame him. Um, la- last year, uh, we're, we're lucky at AK is we have a huge staff, and we have lots of people who wanna be involved. So we get lots of interns, lots of people who need to do hours, people who kind of come into the school or are there for a bit when they're launching their careers. So this person started as an intern with us last year, kind of came in and was doing her hours in the program, and immediately it was like, "Well, don't need an extra counselor, but I want to keep her." So it just so worked out that we were able to hire her this year. So before I go any further, Ms. Christy Carnes.
You brought a lot of caring section with her.
So, I, I, I don't know how you can embody being a school counselor more than Ms. Carnes. Uh, you, you talk about the lessons, the things we expect to be happening, but it's so much more than that. So she's our elementary school counselor, and the kids absolutely love her. And it, it's funny, because it really has become in large part, sorry, this is probably politically incorrect, like a circus of wrangling monkeys some days. And she is like the key monkey wrangler. She's got a great sense of humor. Uh, she even 3D printed out some, uh, little poo and emoji, since we changed some diapers at school now for me, because she thought that was hilarious. But, uh, she just does those things, but she does everything. Junior high dances, she's out to junior high dances, helping, being part of it. One of those people that understands the mileage you get out of being there for all kids, not just your elementary ones that you're focused on, but every kid at the school, every adult. I knew we were in for a treat when she showed up the first day and had a fanny pack. Because I, at first, I wanted to be like, "Oh, girl, we're gonna make fun of that." But she loves it, and she's got treats for the kids, the things they need, just like the, the tricks of the trade to do the job. She's always out. When you watch her doing lessons, it's not just running through the lessons. There's puppets, there's voices, and you watch the kids in the classroom just mesmerized by it. The teachers, uh, just kind of mesmerizing, like, they're almost joining in the lesson. So to go out and watch it is just a real joy to be able to have her on campus. Uh, it doesn't matter what level of escalation we see a kid in. If, if Christie's not in the lesson, she's in the office, and I can put that kid near her for a little bit, the kid's gonna de-escalate. So as an employee, as a, a growing part of the school, she's wonderful to have. I know her kids must be very lucky to have her at home as well, though. They must be very calm as well, because she's very calming for everybody that she's around. So tonight, we wanted to let her know she is all that in a bag of chips, and thank you for being part of the AK team.
Rocco, it's for Mary Poppins back.
Mary Poppins. We'll start the comedy show in a minute.
So we also have our program recognition.
Yeah, so, um, I wanted to bring some faces to, uh, I know I send emails about some of the great work that's going on in our district. And so I wanted to introduce these three ladies who took a vision that we started, I think back in two thousand and eighteen, when we started to advocate, and Dina had conversations with me about us being able to provide our own support and induction program to our teachers to really meet their needs. And so we got to work and we wrote, uh, the paper, the documents and sent it off to the Commission on Teacher Crédituline and got approved. And then we hired some very special people to make this program, uh, what it is today. And they support our new teachers, they support our interns, they support, uh, teachers on, uh, mercy credentials. And I'm gonna also invite Tino too, because Tino, um, in, who's, you know, in charge of its services, is very involved with these very three special, uh, individuals who have really taken a program that we designed and that we had a vision for, but it made it even more than it, than I ever thought it was gonna be. So, Tina, I'm gonna let you introduce these special three names.
Yeah, like, um, Super Tyler, as we said, um, our new teachers, some of them come with a variety of training. Um, and we have, uh, coordinator and, and coaches who have, um, empathy, they have grace, they have knowledge, um, pedagogy. Um, and they really help out our new teachers. Um, not in, in addition to that, um, our district has a lot of intern teachers. And some of them come to us not having any classroom experience at all. And so just imagine that, jumping into an elementary classroom or a high school classroom, um, without having been, been a classroom teacher, so that can be challenging. So they've been ta- taken on that role as well, helping out their sitmen, our PIPs, and our interns. Um, and then recently in March, um, we had our credentialing, our review from the induction program, and they had an actual, like, unanimous recommendation for accreditation. And so they put in hours of work, um, hours of work, and the committee unanimously said, "You guys' program's pretty much phenomenal." Um, so can we invite, can we invite you guys up here just for one second? I'm a person so uh we wanted to thank you guys for all of your hard work and dedication for this such a great job with accreditation and teachers new teachers totally appreciate you guys' work that you guys do for med services and from our cabinet we totally really appreciate all of what you guys do so thank you guys so much for what you guys do for our district and congratulations on the accreditation.
Thank you we appreciate all the support.
Introducing yourselves who are you?
Um I'm Michelle Schopstall the induction coordinator for the district so.
I'm Amy Mattson I'm a full released mentor for the program.
And our missing person is Lori Smith she wasn't able to be here tonight she's also one of our full-time release mentors so.
So if you have an opportunity um they are going to be celebrating our teacher uh candidates who are going to be final magazine if they are induction program and there's an invitation on Monday May twelfth um at Marcello's.
Actually it's at the Old Center Theater.
Thank you.
On the mystery so Marcello's will be catering so that's great for food.
So it's a celebration of our teachers who are completing their program but these um and Lori also the the three of them are the the trio who make it happen in our district and so I just wanted to recognize that the work they've done the fact that our program is fully accredited and it was unanimous speaks to the work they've done and taking something that was just a vision years ago and making it a top notch induction program so thank you.
Well done.
Um report general permission Williams quarterly report.
Uh quarterly we have to report on um Williams and Dallas when Dallas was uniform plates um this quarter I think in March um they don't have any complaints.
Thank you um we do have a few comments um from the public that on items that are not on the agenda so can you read the statement please?
I know. Uh the Brown Act specifically government code section five four nine five four point two provides that no action or discussion shall be taken on any item unless it is adequately described in a timely posted agenda. Accordingly though the public may comment on matters within the board's jurisdiction they do not appear on the agenda. The board cannot respond to such comments without running the risk of deliberating or initiating discussion on topics not properly before the board. Given the prohibition set forth in the Brown Act and the risk associated with responding to public comments the board does not respond to the community's questions or comments the board will respect the rights of the public to express their viewpoints on matters within the board's jurisdiction. However, comments that are defamatory or that violate the privacy rights of any students or individuals may not be protected by law the board shall not permit any disturbance or willful interruption of court.
Thank you I'm Charlene Dela Serna.
Dela Serna. Uh good evening uh teachers parents board members and president Azumi um my name is Charlene Dela Serna and I am a fourth grade teacher at Terra Buena School. I may look familiar to you as I was speaking here last September um when Terra Buena found out that we were going to do AK one combo and I was either gonna be displaced or I had to move to seventh grade. Fortunately um I was able to stay at fourth grade because as many people know Terra Buena is an amazing school and and nobody wants to leave. But unfortunately we were told the other day because of our low numbers another teacher was gonna be displaced. And of course my fear was it was gonna be me and although it's not I wanna be here to speak about it because um it's it's unfair and it's it's tragic to think that a teacher is going to be displaced and that our school is going to be disrupted again. And the reason that we are being told this is because of our low numbers. Well we were told the other day that we that the district is not allowing inter-district transfers that our school has been closed even though we are low in our numbers. And we were told that this is happening to save seats for the housing for the children that will be coming. Well the interesting thing is when I brought up this argument in September that our school is gonna be growing I was told that you can't save seats for children that aren't there. But now we're being told that we are saving seats for children that will eventually be coming. That doesn't seem fair and that doesn't seem legal because I personally know a mom who wants to get her daughters here and when she called she was denied so that Terra Buena is closed. And what what I'm here to say is I thought that legally you are allowed to go to whatever school that you want as long as there are openings. This is not how it should be and then in a teacher shortage when teachers are being told well you're gonna move here you're gonna move here and we have young teachers coming why would they want to stay in a district that is moving teachers around like we're just numbers? That is not how you te- treat teachers that's not how you treat a school and that is definitely not what you tell families that wanna come to a school for legitimate reasons when there are openings because you're saying you're saving these seats for children that will eventually be here when we were told that's not something you can do. So I ask you because there is plenty of time to leave Terra Buena how it is because those children are going to be coming whether it's in our district that we don't move a teacher and we do not displace this teacher thank you.
Chelsea Thornton.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to also talk about Terra Buena School where I work as a seventh and eighth grade English teacher. Uh Terra Buena is a place I care deeply about not only as a teacher but as a parent of two of its students. I understand that the district has made the decision to pause transfers to our school in anticipation of new housing in our attendance area. I actually respect and appreciate the desire to plan ahead and make space for families that are moving in. But those families haven't moved in yet and in the meantime we're feeling the consequences. Because we're no longer allowed to accept transfers our enrollment has dropped and now we are losing a teacher for the second time in less than a year. And the teachers at risk of being displaced. They're fresh and vibrant educators who bring passion energy and creativity to our students every day. They work tirelessly to connect with students and support their colleagues. They're the kind of teachers who shape the future of a school and selfishly maybe I want that future to be Terra Buena's. Put simply it's hard for us to accept that we are losing teachers even though families want to attend our school even though we have the space to welcome them. I know these decisions are complex I know there are many factors for you to examine but I ask you to consider exploring ways to support Terra Buena by being more flexible with transfer policies while still preparing for future growth. I ask you to consider if we're willing to hold these spots for the students we think might be coming perhaps we can invest in keeping the teachers who will be needed to educate them thank you.
Jen Atwell.
Uh good afternoon I'm Arjun Atwell I'm the seventh grade teacher at Terra Buena. Um I'll save us that you guys heard that there are spots open and that we're closing the transfer so I just wanted to say I urge you guys to please come to Terra Buena and walk with me and see all the students that will come and show you the culture at Terra Buena I please I have three students here some that are a little emotional. I would love you guys to come and tell them why we have to displace a teacher. I can't tell a kindergartner that tells me I love you every day that I can't teach you in seventh grade because of students that aren't there. So I I urge you before you make this decision please walk with me at Terra Buena and to see the culture and see what we do for the students. I just ask you guys to give us just one school year to increase the numbers and give us a chance to get transfers I teach karate as well one of my students is actually here. I have parents asking me to get into Terra Buena and I tell them it's out of my control. I it was just brought to my attention that we weren't even allowing transfers. So I just want you guys to know I grew up going to Terra Buena there's a few familiar names and Terra Buena was my home I want to be given the chance to give someone else a home and give my students a chance to succeed thank you.
Um we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. There are two members of the community that would like to speak on um one of the items that are on the consent agenda so can we read the other statement uh member pretty?
Yep thank you. Items posted on the agenda under the Brown Act the board shall entertain comments on any item appearing on the posted agenda. As the board discusses agenda items audience participation participation is permitted. Generally the president will ask board members for their remarks before recognizing requests to speak from the audience. At the president's discretion agenda items may be considered in other than numerical order. The board will respect the rights of the public to express their viewpoints on matters within the board's jurisdiction however comments that are defamatory or that violate the privacy rights of any students or individuals may not be protected by law. The board shall not permit any disturbance or willful interruption of board meetings.
Um Amelia Thompson.
Does my camera start when I start talking awesome thank you good evening board members my name is Amelia Thompson I'm the head coach of the U of City High School Speech and Debate Team. I'm here tonight to request your approval for a student overnight field trip to the California High School Speech Association State Championship. An opportunity that represents not just one student's achievement but the collective success of our team and school community. This is a great honor for all of us and we are so proud to share it with you tonight. This year my student Charlie Eggleston Acosta who has joined us today a member of the class of twenty twenty six has qualified for the California State Championship in Lincoln Douglas debate. This accomplish accomplishment reflects three years of consistent growth dedication and hard work. From the moment Charlie joined the team has steadily refined his skills learning and evolving with each competition. Charlie's achievement highlights highlights the power of individual dedication as well as the collective spirit that drives our program forward. Together we are building a promising upward trend for our team and your continued support has been a key part of this success. For those who have been following the U of City High School Speech and Debate Team for some time you may remember that in the early two thousands our school was a speech and debate powerhouse. Board support during that time was instrumental in helping students achieve at the highest levels and we now have the opportunity to build on that legacy. This honor is as much yours as it is ours and we are excited to share this success with you. With that said I respectfully ask the board to approve our trip to the to the state championship and to reimburse the cost of this trip to me and anyone else who may need to spend their personal funds in advance. It is rather short notice we're going to state next month. Your continued support will ensure that Charlie and our team can represent YCHS at the state championship next month with the board standing behind us as we pursue these prestigious opportunities. Additionally as a naturally gifted debater Charlie has managed not only to qualify for state championships but also for national championships which will be held in Des Moines Iowa. Just this past weekend Charlie went undefeated at the national qualifier finishing first in a field of the best debaters in the Central Valley. Thanks to his continued success we will soon be returning to request approval for our travels to the NSDA National Championship for which we are currently preparing the necessary paperwork. Thank you so much for your time your continued support and for sharing this honor with us. We are excited to move forward with your partnership and are proud to represent YCHS at these prestigious events on both a state and national level.
Charlie Eggleston Acosta.
Hello members of the board I would personally just thank you all for being here and to be listening to me right now I can't admit how much it is and how great of a feeling it is to be able to achieve being able to go to state in California as well as the national tournament. I remember when I first joined YCH at YCHS Speech and Debate. I wasn't very good and I often struggled my first two years my freshman and sophomore year I consistently lost and I kept losing and I thought I would continue losing. And I thought there was no way that I'd be able to achieve such great things such as being able to go undefeated at a tournament. But through my hard work and determination and through the support of my community of all of the YCHS staff my coach Emmy my friends and family I've been able to achieve this and it truly warms my heart I could never imagine being able to go to state going undefeated in a tournament. It still blows my mind and really being a part of debates and practicing in this craft it has just expanded my field of view of the world. I when I first entered high school I wasn't really a public speaker. I struggled standing up in front of large groups of people and talking to them let alone debating or standing on on ideals that I believe in. But through debate I have certainly improved in that. Going to my AP uh language class every day I feel like I'm so it's so easy to write an essay because I constantly do that for debate. I constantly support my arguments and debate has just completely opened my eyes to how to argue and effectively support your beliefs in the world. And I would just like to thank you so much board for your time and for your potential support in this endeavor. Debate is truly like the love of my life I know I am like a teenager and so saying that at this age is kind of extreme but I sincerely do enjoy every aspect about it and I would be overjoyed with your support to be able to go to state thank you so much.
Thank you. Um I don't know if you guys recall last year I did that as a student that almost made to state qualifiers that student was Charlie. And I'm just I remember watching him um I went to go judge one of the tournaments and I remember watching him spar um beforehand and I'm just so proud and amazed as to how far he got it um so Charlie congratulations on going to states and nationals. Um yeah it truly is really really hard it's not easy and seeing students who can stay in it for four years is and seeing the debate team rise again it's amazing. Any comments on your consent journey? Not flagging a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. On a motion by member pretty second by member core all those in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed hearing none motion carries. Uh action items approval of CP two one two one.
Okay just yeah that's okay so with that consent agenda the uh overmat field trip for speech and debate was approved by the governing board. Yeah. Um approval of BP two one two one superintendent's contract. Thank you so I bring back um BP two one two one with clarification on the language that was confusing is on page one ninety two of three hundred fifty. I mean it's underlined it is the final paragraph so it convinces three of those um and three paragraphs that are in end code into one paragraph.
And questions or comments? Yep. I get a motion.
I move that we approve.
Second. On motion by member pretty second by member Fonsa all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed hearing none motion carries. E uh first reading of foreign adoption BP AR six one eight five community day school.
Uh we're proposing uh first reading for uh BP six one eight five and Abbott United six one eight five. Um we brought forth earlier in the fall I think in October um proposal to prove to our CDS code um for a discovery school which is a community day school for expelled youth students sixth to eighth grade. Um that's been approved through the state and so moving forward we need to propose a first reading for our board policy for the community day school. The community day school will be strictly for sixth to eighth grade students. So it's we're bringing forward to you and yeah any questions?
And we're gonna put it in that language right the sixth you'll retype it at it.
Yeah we would we would um they'll win the end specifically for those three grade levels.
When do we propose like o- opening that?
Um August.
In August where would that be announced?
YCIA.
Okay. Any questions? No? Okay so we'll go ahead and want to see um employment contract for assistant superintendent of HR.
Thank you I bring Florida contract and three year contract for the assistant superintendent of human resources recommending Jordan Alvarado for the position. Uh the contract would begin May first of two thousand twenty five and commence through June thirty of two thousand twenty.
Any questions? Nope. Can I get a motion? And make a motion approved?
A second.
On a motion by member Lamb second by member Full T all those in favor? Motion by member Lamb, second by member Quilty, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none? Sorry. Any opposed? I jumped the gun a little bit, sorry. Okay, hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you. And with that, I uh thank you, and I would like to introduce Assistant Superintendent for U of City Unified, Jordan Alvarado.
The new course proposal for the twenty-five twenty-six full year, three D animation and modeling.
We have two course proposals, um, for CRCT pathways, uh, both of them are at U of City High School. Our first one is for advanced construction, and this would be the capstone course, uh, first course is uh beginning construction. And our second course would be advanced three D animation modeling, um, which would follow suit with our first course, which is three D animation. So both these are capstone courses, and their effective start date would be twenty-five point six, four year at U of City High School.
Any questions or comments?
No.
Can I get a motion?
I move that we approve.
Second, no motion by member pretty, second by member Lamb, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. E, declaration of need for the twenty-five twenty-six full year.
Yeah, so this is an annual processes, uh, directors, so I'll wait for this. Uh, declaration of need, so anticipating that that we may not be able to have all of our positions uh filled. And so in terms of emergency, so you'll see uh ALD um, resource specialist and um possibly in need for emergency TK positions.
Any questions?
I'm sorry, and on the back, there's some additional. So again, anticipating that we may, we may need to uh declare that there's a need for these positions.
Can I get a motion? I make a motion. All second, motion by member Lamb, second by member pretty, excuse me, member Tommy, not member pretty. I took him off, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Uh, collective bargaining bargaining agreement, tentative agreement between the district and YCTA.
Yes, so I'll address those. Uh, really, uh, I'll, I'll speak to F and G, so we, um, F is the disclosure about the agreement, so on the cover page, it just kind of highlights the main point of the agreements uh, for twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-five, twenty-six. I also just wanna uh make a comment um to YCTA leadership. Um, we, uh, I felt this is a very good round of collaboration, discussion. We've made some real progress, and um it takes a team to do that, so I appreciate uh your efforts, Dana, and the whole uh executive team for YCTA. Um, and uh, so we're just, we're happy to be, you know, off to the races and not, uh, and movement into twenty-five, twenty-six with the contract in place. So I'll speak a little bit to uh G as well. Uh, and G is the actual agreement, is the tentative agreement. There's a lot of language in there, more detail, um, as far as, you know, kind of the exact changes that we did uh uh in in the agreement. Um, and I'm sure you had a chance to take a look at that. Um, so the disclosure is the superintendent and the CBO are business official, uh, declaring that we can afford the raise, and then the tenant agreement is all the details that gets it done. So any questions on?
I have one question that hasn't been answered. It's probably the most important question.
Oh, they don't have any.
What color is it going to be?
Dennis, Dana and I are going to pick a very special color.
Just like bright orange?
No, no, bright orange.
Any questions? Other questions? Can I get a motion for first one?
Yeah.
Action.
I move that we approve.
Also, same. On a motion by member pretty, second by member core, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Uh, are there any questions on G? Can I get a motion?
I move that we approve.
Second.
On a motion by member pretty, second by member Bonslet, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. H, PGW, G, surveillance, security enhancement.
So this is, we've uh um continuing to increase our uh um improve our cameras and replace our cameras as needed, uh, improve the coverage. This is uh just part of that replacement uh cycle, and so um we're asking for approval of uh this to um replace, we've got about fifty-three cameras and additional equipment and software to um support that.
Any questions?
I just have one. I know that um a couple of the schools, I know U of City High School is one of them, but we're asking for additional cameras. Has that ever, is it, is that part of this, or is that a whole separate issue?
That, so additional cameras, uh, this is mostly replacements and enhanced capabilities that I I don't know of those fifty-three cameras, I don't know.
Just seems like they were asking for, I, I think it was more than just U of City High School, but they were asking for some cameras that would cover some blind spots, and maybe if they were just moved around a little bit, I don't know.
I mean, technology works for all the principles to, you know, make sure that they're, they're, they're we're kind of, that's why I put your process school size with our resources and also make sure we're capturing the main points. I um I don't know the specifics.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Can I get a motion? All make a motion approved?
I approve.
Motion. On that motion by member Tommy, second by member Quilty, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. I, facility agreements for Rising Star Non-Public School.
So this is the business side of it. Dorian could maybe speak more to the educational side of it, but um uh, we were kind of tasked and working with the the Sutter County SALPA and also a a non-public school, Rising Star, to see if there's a possibility of 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 getting a non-public school here at the, in the district and utilize one of our assets out of Central Gaither. So this is a, I think, a a great teamwork and uh collaboration between uh the organizations. Uh, so um, there's two agreements in here. Uh, one is SALPA helping to uh financially to help us get Central Gaither up to, you know, um, get the facilities in shape. It's been sitting for a little bit. And so we appreciate that, uh, but there's an agreement for that, and then the uh lease agreement uh is with Rising Star. And it's just kind of, you know, the details of having agreements to lease that facility.
Questions? Can I get a motion?
Can I make a motion approved? Second.
On a motion by member Lamb, second by member Bonslet, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. J, replace, replacement of food service fans.
So this is part of our uh replacement cycle, um, uh, for vehicles. Uh, we have three of our older vehicles. It's time to uh replace, and so that's what we're doing with this uh um with this request. The uh s- uh student attrition have a separate fund, and they actually uh need to spend down some of the the funds that are sitting in there, and of course, replacing assets that are allocated is a good use of those funds, so requesting uh two hundred thousand dollars to replace the free service dance.
Just kind of clarification, these have like the lifts and all that stuff that are?
They do, so they get, yes, they get kind of kitted out with the lifts and everything that's needed for.
Any other questions? Nope. Any other motion?
No move.
All second, a motion by member Bonslet, second by member Tommy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Seventeen, board reports information and discussion.
I would like to report on the U of City Charter School. Um, I attended their meeting on the first Monday of the month, and um next, our next meeting, we are meeting a half an hour early because their culinary department is going to be serving us dinner. Nice. I'm excited. And then um the other thing is that they were talking about um adding the ethics studies. I guess that's?
Ethnic studies.
Yeah. And, yeah, ethnic studies and um that's going to be required and how they're going to fit that in, and I I guess that's a question for all the s- school districts. And then um they came out with their calendar for next year, and they have invited me to come to their um um, let's see. August fifth and sixth, they're going to be doing um capturing kids' hearts. That's their program that they do for um, their kids, and they've invited me to come the August fifth and sixth, and they're serving breakfast and lunch. I like the food aspect of these meetings.
Right?
Yes. So anyway, and then um they are having their FFA banquet. Their, their FFA program is, is incredible. Um, and um, they're having that, the banquet on May eighth, and they've invited me to that as well. And um, so it's, it's been, it's been good to be a part of that community. Yeah.
Okay. Um, communications, written communications from the public?
There is one in front of you that was received from um in regarding that two-year old situation.
Okay. Um, and then I don't think they asked for it to be ready. Right? It's just from patient receipt. Okay. And then comments from employee representatives?
Good evening, board members, staff, and anyone else um left in the audience. It was a big crowd earlier. Guess it's not quite as exciting as we get to the end. I'm Delikins, President of U of City Teachers Association. Uh, I've got a couple of items I'd like to address this evening. Um, I, I appreciate um Scott's uh recognition of the collaborative role we all played in reaching a tentative agreement in a uh timely fashion once we had all of the financial data that the district and YCTA needed to reach that agreement. That new agreement covers our new contract from June twenty twenty-four to June twenty twenty-seven. And yes, it is likely the last contract covered that Dorian and I will get to pick out together. That orange was not the color that it was on the palette, so we'll try and do better this time. Uh, we reached agreement on a lot of areas, um, but acknowledged that we have ongoing work to do with regards to safety. Um, safety continues to be um an area of greater concern in um our current climate. So we'll continue to work together to address safety issues. Um, we uh weren't able to get to the ever-elusive class size limits because we all recognize that um our students don't show up to our schools in neat little package of twenty-four and twenty-eight and to make us have uh class sizes we all like, and we know that it's a complex decision-making with regards to class size. I'm gonna come back to that idea in a little bit, but I'd also like to um recognize the work of Rob Pogue this afternoon. Um, U of City Unified employs roughly thirty-five teachers without preliminary credentials. Those thirty-five teachers have a variety of emergency credentials, PIPs, STPs, and intern credentials, and there's a whole lot of hoops to jump through to keep them and a whole lot of rules of the game. Um, and Rob Pogue today hosted a meeting for those teachers with emergency credentials. Rob invited uh Jamie Paul from Sutter County, and then invited the mentor folks, and had a meeting to help our teachers with emergency credentials, trying to be proactive to secure their credentials, to understand the rules of the game, the fact that you can only get a PIP once, you can only get a STIP once, um, and to make sure you are credentialed so that you can continue to get paid and stay in the classroom. What perhaps is uh most remarkable about that is um my final reflection on it at the end of our meeting was, Rob, you bring the human to human resources. Um, and I think that is uh what we've all been looking for, so I I appreciate that Rob was proactive in um pulling together that meeting today. Um, I'd also like to address the continued work of the district on the discovery um school and the new community day school provisions. Um, this represents uh so a lot of work to figure out how we're going to engage in some behavioral interventions that will help our students um better understand the um expectations of school and um adjust to some social challenges in schools. Um, we hope that this is just the beginning of our behavioral interventions at middle school, but also perhaps some intensive behavioral interventions for our um other big transitional time for our students. Middle schools, that type of kids are just trying to figure out a lot of things, but so is TKK in first grade as we try and get students to understand what it means to come into our schools. So both areas are areas of need for um some intensive behavioral interventions, and we um like to look forward to continuing that work. I'd also like to call your attention to um pending legislation, AB five sixty, while not um yet legislation is um in the works to consider case load limits for RSP, SLPs, and special day classes. Again, we all have an interest in what's the appropriate class size, what's the appropriate case limit, load limits, so that we can best serve our students. And I'd like to close with um those class size issues are always challenging. Um, I appreciate the complexity of the decision-making as the district has to um consider staffing in order to um provide services to our students and balance our budget. The decision at Terabueno is unfortunate in the, that it impacted them in the fall and impacted them again in the spring. Um, when Charlene said, um, I may look familiar, um, that that's true, it's um unfortunate, but it's happened twice. What I would like the district to consider is intra-district transfers and leaving all options open. So right now on the intra-district transfer, it's actually intra-inter-district transfer form, um, you get to select the possible school you want to go to. In that selection is listed, most of our schools, um, Barry, Vista, and TB are not listed. Not totally sure why not listed. I do understand the reasoning of, we expect that Terabueno will likely grow with the new um housing developments. BV is probably pretty close to their capacity. I know that all their classrooms are um occupied. They can't find a classroom for music. I know Terabueno has actual physical space, but if the case is overcrowded campuses, AK is kind of bursting at the seam, but AK is on the list that you could possibly do an intra-district to AK, but you can't to TB where they're actually at classroom space. So I guess I would just urge us to consider leaving all options open for parents, so we at least have an idea of what are their interests? Are parents looking to move their children? Are we doing as much as we can to make the options available? Be, by leaving the options available, you are not securing a position. You're not making a final decision. The decision still rests with the district. In the, the decision at cutting at TB, I understand the issues at fifth grade. Um, there's sixty-five students. And, you know, when you split them up, it looks like, okay, thirty-one and thirty-two in classes, but those are larger um than are most effective for our students. So I'm urging you to just look at some of the options in our intra-inter-district transfers. And um, I definitely think the form should be revised because it currently reads, I can request an intra-district transfer to Central Gaither. So oops, uh, man, I appreciate your time this evening, and thank you. Thanks for giving me a little chocolate to be in there.
Oh, wait, you can't leave. I'm gonna talk. I never get to talk to others. That's ridiculous.
Just kidding, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
My name's Mercedes Geraldo, and I represent our classified employees here, and let's recognize the board, our audience, and I just kind of shamed, I apologize, I really didn't mean to do that. Um, take a minute to recognize Melinda Thomas, who is a hub at AK, right? She's been there for, I don't even know how long, and an integral, integral part of that um staff there. Last week, April second, was paraprofessional day. Normally, we're on spring break, so we don't get recognized, but we were in school and we, I don't think anybody, I didn't hear of any paraprofessional that got recognized on paraprofessional day, which is pretty sad because almost a third of our classified staff is a paraprofessional. We have paraprofessionals in our after-school program as ELOP pairs, we have them in classrooms, our TK pairs, we have our special education pairs, we have our ELD pairs, and we just have some general pairs out there that are doing that work, and they're working really hard, and they're in those classrooms with little support and little training on, but making it happen. So we really need to do better at recognizing um, the people that make the district run. Um, everybody, every single person in our district has value and has importance, and we need to recognize that. Um, moving on, our reclass committee met uh for our spring reclass last week, and we um viewed five different applications for reclass and uh made some decisions on those. And um, on Monday, our negotiation team met again with the district, and we are and we are really pushing to get through them, through our negotiations by the end of this fiscal year to complete our three-year contract. We kind of tried to look at maybe we could just do two years and come back for the third, but it looks like we're going to try to just knock it out and get it done, get all three years and take a break for a minute. We also have been very collaborative. It's been a really nice negotiation sessions where we actually just talk things out rather than, yes, we do caucus, and yes, we do go back and forth. But having that collaboration to get to where we need to be has been invaluable to the process. So I do appreciate that. Next week, we have spring break, which for classified employees, some of them means they have a week off, but some of our paraprofessionals will be working the intercession. Others are twelve-month employees, so they'll be here. Some of our two seventeen employees are on their blackout week, so they won't be here. So you'll see some classified professionals on campuses and in offices and other places not. But this is an opportunity for those departments to get some extra work done without, you know, all of us other people interfering in their, their work. So I'm sure that they're looking forward to some of their projects, but projects where they can really get, get down and dirty and get them done. Another thing I just want to recognize is that our, our coaches, many of them are classified. We heard from two of them here tonight, Coach Costas and Coach Burns, both classified employees in the district, as well as many of our other, other coaches. Talking about safety in our schools, again, I just want to encourage that we encourage our staff, our admin teams to make sure that they're including classified staff when we're talking about catapult, when we're talking about things that is important to all of our safety. When classified employees are left out, then that could become dangerous if there's a situation in the schools and we don't know how to respond. So I do encourage that we make sure that we are including classified in those discussions. And kudos to getting this discovery school going and on campus. I think probably the only one here that might know this story is that I started out as a one-on-one para driving a student down to a non-public school down in Carmichael for almost a whole entire year, and that was quite an eye-opener. It was trial by fire for special education, didn't know a whole lot about special education. But those drives are difficult. Those, right now, we're putting kids on buses to go down to Sacramento. I think we have like two or three different stops that they go to. They're on those buses for just, you know, at least an hour, then they're in school, and then they have that whole hour home. For kids that are at risk and having struggles with their behaviors, that's not an ideal situation. So having them here locally is really going to benefit those students. And I appreciate that. I'm sure that's a collaborative effort to make that happen, and I think it's very, very helpful. So, and that, have a wonderful spring break.
Thank you. Comments from more, honey?
I just had a question with regards to the Terabuena. So I had understood previously the process was for intra-district transfers. Obviously, the precedent was for those who were, who were part of the zone, right? But those who request intra-district transfers were told or are told, the process is they are told, it's contingent, or their acceptance is contingent, and it's not a hundred percent. If, if there are students that come into the school that fall because they're zoned for it, you get bumped. Am I wrong?
So correct, so if in fact any school there is too, the enrollment is too large, then the board policy allows us to revoke transfers, yes? Is that what your question is?
And then, and so is that, so that's the current process? So then that would, and that hasn't changed for Terabuena?
No, but also by board policy, annually, we look at the sites where there has been impacted enrollment. And so we will contain, let, let the community know what schools are open for transfers and which are not. And so that's been something we've done routinely in terms of annually, and that's allowed by policy. But again, so historically, Terabuena has been a school which was impacted, and we were having to send neighborhood students who were to attend Terabuena to go to Bubis and April Lane, and so we were having to bus them. And so we're, we look at that annually in terms of every school and their enrollment, and then makes decisions about whether or not we can accept transfers or not.
So then are there students that were going to Bubis or April Lane because Terabuena was full? Are they now released to go to Terabuena?
Back to Terabuena, so we had to do that at April Lane this year where April Lane was full, and so students were transported over to King Avenue. Here, so I have an option to go back to April Lane.
So if, if, if I don't, if you don't mind me jumping in here. If, if Terabuena currently has room, I mean, I, the argument that AK is bursting at the seams, and I've been, I've, I've visited both AK and Terabuena. And AK is very full, but it's open. And Terabuena has room, but it's closed.
Well.
And I, I know that there's a housing development going.
More than one.
Yeah, but, but, but the houses aren't selling that quickly, and people haven't moved in yet. So I, I just feel like perhaps we're a little premature on displacing a teacher.
So the other thing is those staffing projections are done for every school. And so there are schools throughout the district that are having to displace teachers. There are actual displacements, some of them are done through attrition, through retirements and resignations. And so it's not just one school, Terabuena. So there are other schools that have gone through displacement conversations, I believe, River Bend, Uba City High School, because of just the current enrollment and then also staffing projections for the next school year. So the, the notion is that if the enrollment is projected to be this and not this, then we're staffing appropriately at every site based upon the current enrollment and the projections for the next school year.
I guess I don't understand either that you, okay, so you displaced a teacher in the fall, but then they, but then you were anticipating the enrollment to be impacted, right? And now you're displacing another teacher.
We displaced a teacher based upon enrollment. At any site where we make a displacement, it's due to the fact that the enrollment is, did not come in as projected. So there's a displacement, and then again, we look for next school year based upon our projections, and are the class sizes going to be in alignment with the rest of the district? And if not, there's displacement. So Terabuena is not the only school that's going through a displacement. So based upon our projected enrollments at several of our schools, there are displacements occurring for reduction in staff based upon attrition because staff are habit decided. So for example, Lincoln, Lincoln is losing an FTE, but it's being absorbed because one of the teachers is retiring. So this isn't just a Terabuena?
No. No, I understand that, but then why can't you open up the inter-district transfers then? Why is it still closed?
Well, I think that's been, if I can, so for inter-district transfers, from what I remember, they close in January, it's just, that's just how it's always been. So they can account for what? Is it January, I believe, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So again, based upon his, so there's this historic analysis that Scott goes through in terms of analyzing enrollment and enrollment projections. And so based upon that information, principals are meeting with us and talking about their staffing and their projections. And so the, yes, could we just open in, uh, transfers across the district? But because of the fact that if you take a bunch of students from one school, then you're going to have another issue at the other school. So let's just say, when you use Langcrest, if we allowed all the transfers out of Langcrest, now you have an issue at Langcrest because the class size just dropped. So it's one of those things that it's, I think it's an analysis that's not just done by school in isolation. We look at history, we look at projections, we look at development. And so the whole process is just not one school in isolation. So again, there's many schools right now that are going through displacements. There's this school, I think there's two that are adding.
Yep.
A couple of staff members because they have projected enrollment is larger than anticipated. So it's, I'm trying to explain it, if I'm doing a very good job, it's the bigger picture. I think it's a bigger picture, and that's what I, I just wanted to ensure everyone it's not.
And if that, that's for next school year.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I, I think, which can all change. I think in the past, well, I know in the past, we've gotten numbers by classes and whatnot. At least I know we got that last year. So like, as opposed to maybe expanding this conversation that's not agendized, maybe we can direct the superintendent to get us those numbers, and that way we can see what, what's happening within the district as far as like what numbers are seen today that led to the decisions that they're making and see if that changes by the end of school year. Would that be great?
Well, I, I, we're happy to share, share the staffing projections that we use to discuss staffing each, each site. So I think it's, again, I, I want to assure the board, this is not one school that's being picked on.
Right.
There's a bigger picture that we look at when we're staffing and doing the projections.
I, I don't think anybody thinks that one school's being picked on. But the thing that concerns me is the point that was brought up that, like I said, AK is completely full and bursting at the seams, but it's open to transfers. Terabuena is closed to transfers.
I understand.
And CG is open to transfers.
Yeah, and I don't know how that happened, and we'll have to look into how that happened. But the issue is it can be open for transfers but not approved. So right now, there are no transfers being approved to AK. So how, how that happened, Shelley, I don't know, but I'll, we'll have to look into it. But again, we've been trying to limit transfers also just because of trying to keep the schools in the projected enrollments.
Yeah, you don't want dominoes going off, I, I do understand that.
And, and according to Jasmine, all transfers are closed since January, right?
That's historical, like they, and then they're, they make the window.
So you don't move kids in the middle of the school year, or do it for. Well, no, no, but even January, that people that submit an application for an intra-district transfer have to do it before January for the fall.
Yeah.
That's what that it's about.
Right, and when we can transfer their proofs, the two high schools had transfers. They were pretty much evenly distributed where hundred kids wanted to go to River Valley and hundred kids wanted to go to YC, those were approved and allowed to, to have them transfer. So again, there's a process, and it takes a lot of time and energy. And Scott's projections, along with input from the principals, so I understand. And I'm, I'm happy to share those numbers with you in the Friday.
Awesome. Any other comments? No?
It's finally spring.
It has grown.
If anybody has a bee swarm, call me. We're looking. Can fill up a couple lines.
Okay. Comments from superintendent?
Yes, I just would like to, and I hope that you got the information. We have an all-district band performance tomorrow night at seven o'clock at Uba City High School. It's always fun to see our kids come together from both the middle schools and the high school. You will be getting the open house schedule for the schools that are going to be happening this spring, and I believe it'll, it'll be in the Friday. And then also, it's time to sign up for promotions and graduations. So.
You did some.
Oh, you did, there you go, okay. So if you have not signed up, you will be contacted to sign up. So it will be here before we know it.
So, thank you. All right, next board meeting is April twenty second at seven PM. Can I get a motion for adjourned?
Alloft.
Second, on a motion by, pretty second by members, I'm all those in favor.
Bye.
Bye. And phones, wearing the long shirts.
Uba Sutter dot lives local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies and Penske truck rentals. Details at PlumasLakeSelfStorage.com.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Uba Sutter and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Uba Sutter and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at five three zero seven four nine eight eight zero zero. Comfort Keepers of Uba Sutter and Nevada Counties.